Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Bloomington Common Council meeting for Wednesday, October the 19th. This is our regular session. I will begin by asking our clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith? Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Scambaluri?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Thank you, and to summarize our agenda this evening, we have three sets of minutes for approval, and then we will move on to our reports section, beginning with council member reports, the mayor and city offices, in which we will hear the Climate Action Plan Progress Report, council committees, and then our first opportunity for public comment, followed by any appointments to boards and commissions. Then we will have legislation for second readings and resolutions that include appropriation ordinance 22-04 to specifically appropriate from the general fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated to fund an emergency reproductive healthcare program to help address the impacts of Indiana's near-total abortion ban, followed by Resolution 22-18, a resolution proposing an ordinance modifying local income tax allocations in Monroe County and casting 56.66 votes in favor of the ordinance regarding adjusting the allocations between the Public Safety Answering Point, the PSAP, and general public safety purposes tax rates without changing other allocations or the total expenditure tax rate. This then is followed by legislation for first readings, which include ordinance 22-28, final approval to issue economic development revenue notes, and land the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Countryview Apartments, 2500 South Rockport Road, and Countryview Housing LP is the petitioner, followed by ordinance 22-29, ordinance authorizing and approving a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement with Countryview Housing Limited Partnership for Countryview Apartments, and then followed by ordinance 22-31, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Sections 15.12.010 Stop Intersections, to change a stop intersection location to a multi-stop intersection location. This will be followed by our second opportunity for public comment before we talk about our council schedule and then adjourn for the evening. So let us head back to the top of the agenda and talk about our minutes for approval.
Madam President, I move the approval of September 29th, 2021, October 6th, 2021, and September 28th, 2022 minutes.
Second.
All right, moved in second, and are there any corrections to these minutes? And seeing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 All right, and next? So we've approved all of the minutes, is that correct? All right. Reports for council members. This evening, let me start to my right with councilmember Smith.
Andy? I have a report on the last plan commission meeting. I'm the liaison from the council to the plan commission. So this one was, had a lot of good information, a lot of good things happening, so I wanted to let you know what was going on and report to my colleagues as well as the public. The plan commission met together at the regularly scheduled meeting, Monday night, 10:10, 22. Next meeting is going to be November 14th. There were three petitions. One was petition related to Johnson Creamery, where they requested an extension to the continuing efforts at working out a resolution to the allevication. City recommended approval and the plan commission voted 90 to grant the extension. Next one was petition for Strauser Construction. They requested and were approved 90 for a nine-building self-service storage facility near Forest Fitness, 3,000 and 3,060 Walnut Street with 10 vehicle spaces. The petition met all applicable standards in the UDO and was therefore approved. The last was petition ZO40, I believe I'm reading that right, 40-22, where Monroe County government request for a zoning map amendment for the proposed Monroe County Detention Center. The request, the change request is from ME, Mixed Use Employment, to MI, Mixed Use Institutional, at the corner of northeast corner of I-69 and Fullerton Pike for the new detention center. The petitioner did not request a waiver for the second hearing. Consequently, the plan commission will approve sending that to the next plan commission meeting, which is on November 14th, when then we probably would be taking some final action there. Jeff Cogrel, Monroe County Government Attorney, described the project along with Jackie Scanlon from City Planning, with comments from Julie Thomas, Monroe County Commissioners' President. It was noted that County Commissioner Thomas, they had other sites that there are available, but the current site under discussion and proposed was proposed first by report from Council President Thomas at the request of the mayor, Mayor Hamilton, to, that the facility be contained if possible within city limits. So this is the first one then that's coming forward. In brief, the advantages of the site for the detention center are MI allows for the detention center use, the county believes this is an ideal site, proximity to the city, proximity to I-69. In the site, the parcel is about 80-plus acres. It is bound by some great trees and geographic things that probably are very helpful to the site development. There are approximately 36 acres of developable land, that's easy for you to say. Report by DLZ Architectural Service Firm stated that at least 25 acres would be needed. There's the natural tree buffer barrier. The site will not abut any residential development. The disadvantages are the MI zone does not align with the existing comprehensive plan. The MI zone does not allow for associated commercial businesses such as retail or restaurant activity, which may or may have an impact. The detention center development may preclude other uses that the ME was designed for and hope for, which are generally job developments with the MI designation. Another disadvantage is karst topography is present at the location. So there's a question on drainage. There is a hydrologist report that is being prepared, or perhaps it may be finished soon, which will bear on further information in our decisions at the plan commission. There were quantities of topsoil in the area that were removed and cannibalized to assist in the development of I-69, and so there's a question whether if there's plantings needed that it might be that, we'll have to get some more topsoil for that area, or the builders were, developers will. The closed tree canopy, which is great, it'll need to be preserved, and there is currently, which is a big sticking point, there is currently no transit out to that area. They have had, county has had preliminary discussions with BT Bloomington Transportation, and have had some, you know, encouraging signs. The second hearing is going to take on November 14th, take place on November 14th, and I'll give a little report on that after we have that. I would encourage anyone in the public who might be interested in this proposal to send their questions to the plan commission, perhaps in care of Darla Frost, and plan commissioners will be happy to consider that input. To the best of my recollection, I've tried to give you an accurate summary of the proposal as I heard it and processed it myself, and where it stands at this point, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this point from my colleagues.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from councilmember Volin.
Did you want to take questions for Mr. Smith?
Do we typically do that during council reports? I don't think we do.
Just because he's on the client commission, I thought you might want to. That's fine. Thank you, I'll go ahead. Mr. Lux, could you put that poster up, please? And if you could zoom in a little bit to maybe the top half would be great. Early voting began last week in the state of Indiana and lasts until noon Monday, November 7th. I am proud to promote the Vote Where You Sleep campaign to encourage those who have moved from out of state to register to vote and to vote where it matters most to their daily lives. This initiative is a combined effort of the Monroe County, Indiana branch of the National Organization of Women, in fact, you can scroll up to the bottom half for a second, IU Student Government, the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, the IU and Monroe County Branches of the NAACP, the League of Women Voters, the IU Civic Leaders Center, and the Political and Civic Engagement or PACE Program in the IU College of Arts and Sciences. This event, by the way, among other things, is an effort to compete in the Big Ten Voting Challenge, which is measuring the success of various university students voting on two dimensions, greatest overall turnout and greatest increase in voting rates. It's an effort to try to get greater participation in democracy among students. This site has links to several interesting sites of note. Vote411.org, provided by the League of Women Voters Education Fund, a site that takes your address and gives you a preview of your entire ballot, lets you check your voting registration and find your polling place, a link to IU.bloomvotes.com, provided by IU Student Government, and perhaps most significantly, a link to a free ride to vote early at the Election Operations Center at the corner of Third and Walnut, 302 South Walnut Street, the site of the former Napa Auto Parts Store. The local Now Chapter won a grant to pay for voucher codes for a ride via Uber for any voter in Monroe County from their home to the early polling place and back anytime before noon Monday, November 7th, and will pay, will provide a free voucher to any voter to get from their home to their polling place on Election Day. For the sake of completeness, I want to give you the very obscure QR code, or what you'll get if you type the QR code. The address for that voucher link is HTTPS colon slash slash R dot uber dot com slash R capital F capital U S J capital C V capital D capital S U capital B. That's very long and involved, but this poster also has it, but at least I've said it for the record. I urge everyone to be heard in what has become another existentially momentous election year. Please vote by November 8th. If you can, before November 8th, vote early in person and fulfill the legacy of the amendments of the Constitution that protect everyone's right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
No comment.
Councilmember Scambaluri?
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. And to my left, councilmember Piedmont Smith, any report?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report, thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a short report. That is, I serve on the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission. We met yesterday, and we approved the 2021 annual report. We also appointed election of officers. I am serving as vice chairperson, and chairperson is, I just drew a blank. Cheryl Munson. Gosh. I'm getting old. Cheryl Munson, who has been serving as the interim chair, was elected for chairperson. And briefly, the report is, we have a year-end balance of $9 million, approximately $9 million for the city and $750,000 for the county. The county's expenditures this year accounted for about $300,000 for convention center debt service and management expense, and the city's expenditures for 2021 from fab appropriations were Cherry Canary Vintage Clothing for $37,500, In Bloom Juicery for $35,000, University Club of IU, $25,000, and the Bike Shop, $25,000. These are RRF loans. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I have no report, so we will move now to the reports from the mayor and city offices, and we have a Climate Action Plan Progress Report from Lauren Clemmons from ESD.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public in person via Zoom. I am Lauren Clemmons, and I serve as the Assistant Director of Sustainability in the Economic and Sustainable Development Department. Tonight, I will provide a brief summary of the latest climate and sustainability progress report submitted to council last Friday. The public can also find a copy of this report posted in tonight's council packet and on the city's website, along with past reports, at Bloomington dot ion dot gov slash sustainability. The report was also discussed at last night's Climate Action and Resilience Committee meeting. This evening's discussion will focus on progress towards implementing two plans that are currently active, the 2018 Sustainability Action Plan and the 2021 Climate Action Plan. I will provide an overview of the goals of both plans, a snapshot of the completed and progress, ongoing actions, and recent progress towards increasing capacity to implement climate and sustainability actions. The Climate and Sustainability Action Plans act as strategic guides for climate implementation in Bloomington. The 2021 Bloomington Climate Action Plan established long-term climate resilience and mitigation goals for Bloomington through 2050. Implementation of the cap, strategy, and actions are intended as a 10-year, community-wide effort implemented in three phases until 2030. Implementation of the plan is currently underway for actions in Phase 1. The 2018 Sustainability Action Plan represented the first formal sustainability planning effort for the city of Bloomington and strengthened existing sustainability initiatives by identifying and communicating strategic goals with an emphasis on climate mitigation strategies. Implementation of this plan is active until the end of 2023. Bloomington's greenhouse gas emissions are predominantly generated by consumption of electricity and natural gas to heat and cool buildings across the community. In 2018, 1.3 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent were emitted in Bloomington, and between 2008 and 2018, emissions have dropped 16% in part due to reduced emissions associated with energy production. Under a business-as-usual scenario, we can expect that greenhouse gases are projected to decrease an additional 9% by 2030 and 43% by 2050. Successful implementation of the actions and strategies in the Climate Action Plan will be necessary to achieve an additional roughly 322,000 metric ton of emission reductions The report itself is only a glimpse of the overall effort underway across the community to address climate issues. Overall, the city and community are making significant progress to advance our sustainability and climate goals as defined by these two plans, and are prioritizing those actions that warrant the most urgent attention. This progress report to council designates progress towards individual actions in both plans as completed, underway, ongoing, not started, or inactive. Across the two plans in the nine sectors represented, 112 actions are completed, underway, or ongoing, which is a significant achievement since the beginning of implementation three years ago, especially given the ongoing global pandemic. This graphic on the slide, which can also be found on page three of the report, provides a snapshot of overall progress, while the status of each action can be found within the report text. Additional progress towards implementation will continue in upcoming years. I will now describe the efforts undergone to increase internal and external implementation capacity, as well as the progress towards increasing funding support for climate action since my last report. Internal capacity refers to establishing the Climate Action Plan as a priority to internal city operations through outreach, education, special projects, and city service delivery. Nearly all city departments were involved in the development of the Climate Action Plan, and the majority of the departments are now implementing various actions within the plan, a truly collaborative effort. To realize community climate goals requires sustained efforts across all sectors, year over year and throughout the next decade. A few key efforts led by the city to scale up momentum around climate action have positioned the city to significantly reduce emissions of city operations. These multi-year efforts led by Bloomington Transit and Utilities bear mentioning tonight as examples of significant growth in internal capacity to advance climate goals. City of Bloomington Department Directors and staff members have advanced significant progress towards implementation of the cap, including significant fleet electrification efforts. Bloomington Transit recently received another $7 million grant for electric buses, and the Transit Board of Directors adopted a goal to transition the bus fleet to 60% electric by the year 2030. This new grant award, coupled with existing federal funds, positions Bloomington Transit to add 16 battery electric buses to the current fleet by 2024. In recognition of City of Bloomington Utilities' efforts to help residential customers address stormwater drainage concerns on residential lots, the Residential Stormwater Grants Program received a 2022 Education and Outreach Award from the Indiana Association for Flood Water and Stormwater Management. The program is an innovative outreach effort that brings together many stakeholders while improving the city's stormwater system to build resilience to climate impacts. Active since 2019, this is an ongoing effort that mitigates flood hazards and impacts while increasing green infrastructure capacities. These efforts are among and in addition to the significant work advanced by other city departments in conjunction with partners and leaders in the community. City departments act as partners through outreach, education, and projects across all of the sectors represented in the Climate Action Plan, including initiatives that were outlined throughout the course of the budget presentations and in the 2022 City Goals Midyear Many elements of both plans require new approaches, initiatives, and programs to support implementation. The Climate Action Team convenes bi-monthly internally to discuss in advance actions of the cap and discuss updates on city projects and initiatives in support of implementation. The work of this group is ongoing since 2019 and will continue in 2023. Advancing climate action goals relies on increasing support for the plan outcomes from community members, as well as additional coordination with jurisdictional, institutional, and organizational partners. Launched in fall 2022, the Zero in Bloomington website now serves as a centralized campaign to provide Bloomington residents with local customized recommendations to reduce household carbon emissions in support of the cap. By creating a profile, residents can now learn about the benefits and incentives of committing to climate actions and receive insights about energy usage based on their own household characteristics. The site dashboard also tracks community progress towards carbon neutrality. Other notable advancements to grow partnerships with other institutional and organizational partners included co-hosting a regional climate convening this month, which brought together over 100 attendees from Bartholomew, Brown, and Monroe County across the private, nonprofit, educational, and government sectors. The convening was intended to kickstart collaboration across the region, and planning for follow-up activities with business and industrial users is underway to accelerate commitment to climate action. Advancement of climate action is now supported by significant ongoing investments following the passage of the Economic Development Local Income Tax and Bond Funding in early 2022. ESD's 2022 budget proposal alone includes over 1.6 million in direct climate investments. The approved 2023 budget will also support numerous projects, programs, and initiatives to advance sustainability and climate action, both directly and indirectly. The dedication of this funding will accelerate and deepen the impact both of existing programs, expand the scope of other programs piloted during the pandemic, and allow for additional new investments in alternative transportation that would not have been possible prior to the dedication of both the EDLIP and bond funds. Past climate efforts piloted under Recover Forward for the Urban Canopy, solar, energy efficiency, and composting efforts will continue to provide grants and other funding to community partners to implement projects. These local investments will be matched and amplified by recent federal investment, including the Infrastructure and Inflation Reduction Acts that represent transformational opportunities to both address the drivers of emissions and improve resiliency across Bloomington and Monroe County. To achieve Bloomington's vision of a carbon-neutral and resilient community, businesses, industry, all level of government, and residents must come together to reduce our collective carbon impact and continue to advance climate action across all sectors. We all have a role to play in climate action, look forward to working together with the council, county, nonprofit, private sectors, and with the community to continue to support the short and long-range implementation of both plans. Thank you for your time this evening, and I welcome your questions.
Very good, thank you. Do we have questions from Ms. Clemmons? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thank you for the excellent report, and we're definitely making progress. It's very encouraging. Regarding, we met last evening with the Climate Action Resilience Committee, and you had mentioned that we're anticipating a fall in carbon as a function of technology, technological progress, and I wondered if that was, if you also included population growth of Bloomington in that calculation? Because are we, you know, we're probably going to be growing, I don't know, 5% per year? I have no idea, but did you anticipate that?
Yeah, so within the modeling of the Climate Action Plan emission trajectory, not only for the rest of the decade, but until 2050, we looked at pretty, we looked at population increases that were consistent with how much they've increased over the last 10 years. Of course, that could change, but generally, over time, we've seen that emissions per capita have declined in part because of greater efficiency in buildings and things like that, so that will continue to dictate how much we can expect to see emissions change, but in general, for every new person that's moving to Bloomington, their carbon impact is less than it was 10 years ago.
Okay, great. I have one other one. Could I follow up? It's just a reiteration of a question I had yesterday, which I think is important, which is the impact of sequestration. We talked a little bit about that, and you mentioned that although we didn't have an aggregate number, as I recall, yet, in terms of the impact of trees soaking, predominantly trees soaking up carbon, that we're now in a good place to do that, because we have a tree inventory, and I think you showed a great GIS map of that. Do you have that map, Andy, by the way?
I don't have it handy, but yeah, we do have an urban forestry map for public trees, and on there is the carbon sequestered per-tree type estimate, so we have an estimate, I would say, of our entire urban canopy, and that will continue to be updated with future urban forestry assessments. The part that's missing in terms of the broader sequestration context is looking at private tree planting and the impact of that in our total urban canopy.
Yeah. I think it would be interesting also to include, it's a minimal amount, but prairie plantings, so the goat farm, for instance, because they're soaking up carbon as much as trees, and it would be good to have that number as well, just as a baseline to build on, I suppose.
Since we've completed our last greenhouse gas emissions inventory, some of the protocol around measuring carbon emissions reduction from the urban canopy has been updated, so we will be looking into that more, and by the next time, I think I'll have more information for you in terms of how much that's contributing to the total picture.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin, did you have a question?
I just wanted to know where the slides were, and they were in my email, so I found them, and I thank you for that. Thank you for sending them in advance. I'm glad that we're getting them in advance now, thank you.
All right, councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you so much for your report and for joining the committee last night for a preview. I wanted to ask about the Zero in Bloomington website and how that's being rolled out and how we're getting people to participate.
Yeah. So I think there's a variety of different ways that we're working to get people enrolled. We have 71 households registered just from the initial announcement, but we have an engagement plan, and part of that is by working through existing groups, like trying to get commitments from groups like Rotary or other networks where people are engaged and may be interested in participating, and also working with IU and thinking about how to best reach out to the student population so that they can look at some of the actions, definitely under the renter-friendly section. We're also looking at in the spring, between January and April, rolling out a challenge, inviting people to participate with incentives that will culminate with Earth Day, so basically working through existing networks of people that are more likely to register if they're working alongside with a group, and then that increases the collective impact.
Yeah, I was just looking at the site and wanted to see Yeah, I was, I was just looking at the site and wanted to see if there were comparisons or groups active right now. It doesn't seem like there are, but.
Not quite. I mean, we're also working, the same sites being used by different communities across the country, so we're, we have a collaboration call and are talking to other cities that have been using it in the past to see what's been effective in terms of driving engagement. And there's basically, I think, a tipping point where, as we have more groups engaged, you can start to create challenges, maybe across different council districts or neighborhoods, where it sort of becomes more of an active engagement platform, but we're also sending out some reminders for maybe people that registered initially and don't know where to go next about actions that they can take and get started and be more active users on the site.
Great. I have one other, but I can wait.
Sure. Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. First, just a quick note that, for the, for the members of the public, if you go to bloomington.in.gov/sustainability and scroll down to the Resources section, the Urban Forest Assessment brings up the terrific interactive GIS map and story map that Councilmember Rallo was mentioning. And thank you very much for the presentation, and again, for joining us last night. Thanks to you and all your staff for the terrific work and progress you've been making. I wanted to just ask a clarifying question with respect to the actions that are reported on. Is that all Phase 1 actions? Is that right? What's in that report?
For the cap, yeah. There's Phase 2 and 3 actions, but those weren't included in the report because they're not scheduled to be implemented.
That's what I thought, just double checking. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Sims, and then back to Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Clemens, for the report. You mentioned, I think it was a conference or a meeting where you had over 100 attendees. Was that comprised mostly of local people? Was it a, a regional component? I guess I'm headed toward regional collaborations, and how is that going?
So it was a regional climate convening, co-hosted by Mayor Hamilton and Mary Lynnup from Columbus, and the attendees ranged across the three county region from Bartholomew, Brown, and Monroe, and we had a keynote from Clemens to come speak, and the attendees ranged from, you know, members of organizations that are already taking action on climate, or businesses. We had some academic partners and also some members of different levels of government across those three counties.
Okay. Now, just one more. How do you anticipate, I think, going on into the future, regionally working? Because we have plans here in the city, turning fossil fuel into electric, leaves and all that. Is there some sort of an agreement that we do regionally or working toward that in order to mitigate climate change?
Yeah, I think we're working towards figuring out what that structure looks like. There's a lot of existing collaboration also with Columbus on other things like the arts, and so that's a great model, but the next step for follow-up, I think, will be regrouping with Mary Lynnup and talking about what a good structure is moving forward in terms of frequency of meetings, but I think it was pretty successful in bringing together diversity of different potential partners and learning about what they're doing in this space, anywhere from the utility to, you know, small businesses that have already made climate action plans, and so that was sort of an initial opportunity to regroup and have more connections built in person now that that sort of event is possible.
Okay, thank you. Kind of exciting. Thank you very much.
I'll also say that there's a recording of the event that's available, and I'm happy to send it to any of you that might be interested in watching it.
Great. Councilmember Scambleory, and then back to Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the report and for your very good work. I especially appreciate the progress tracker as kind of a look at a glance about what's underway, what have we accomplished, what have we not? And in particular, as we think about things that are not yet started, or that are inactive, or that are stalled perhaps, what do you want council to know about need areas? Is it about money? Is it about engaging more volunteers? Is it about more staff? Or is it just a function of time? It takes time to do things. Is there anything you'd like us to know?
I think some things that may not be started yet, it's because they're, it's a matter of phasing. So one aspect of a action that needs to happen later on, we're scoping out right now. There is, I think, also a question of capacity and partnerships. Maybe the city's not the best leader on a certain item, but we can help support in other ways, whether it's through funding or otherwise. I think it's also a very ambitious plan, so we will continue to evaluate which things have progressed more quickly, perhaps because we've had to change the timing based on available federal funding. So I think there's a lot of things that might have been scheduled to happen in the last two years, and they just haven't made a lot of sense, but then we've moved forward on other things more quickly, and I think the example of electric buses is perfect for that, because that sort of federal funding would not have been possible without federal investments in the last couple of years, and so I think we'll continue to evaluate, and I think the value of having that council committee is really helpful, because we can dig more into specific things that council can work with city staff on moving forward, and we had a couple of those conversations last night, and I think those will continue at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wanted to ask how the Commission on Sustainability has been working, whether they are a partner in implementing parts of the plans?
Yeah. So they've got three active working groups right now. One is on waste reduction strategies, and so they're looking at opportunities for different community composting opportunities that might be able to be implemented. We've got a heat reduction, or heat management working group that's also been looking at more of the health and safety aspects of the cap and has been doing some engagement with the Monroe County Health Department, and then another one that's related to climate justice, and in following up on the event that was held by the Commission on Sustainability earlier this year. So I think they have put together an annual report, and I'm happy to, like, circulate that with you all as well for Bcos.
So, but do you feel like they, they are working in conjunction with city staff on pursuing these, these goals?
Yeah, I think the working group model has been helpful so that they can advance particular aspects that they're interested in continuing to work on. So those are all in conjunction with cap actions, and it's been good to see things moving forward more quickly in the last couple of months.
And does the Environmental Commission play a role at all, or could they?
Yeah, I think they've been doing a lot of work around green space. They're also working and looking at some air quality monitoring, and so we have liaisons between both commissions that have been providing updates.
That's great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Well, once again, thank you very much for the good work and the excellent report.
Thank you.
All right, next, we are ready to hear from anyone who has a council committee report. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, just briefly, as was noted in the report we just heard, the council's Climate Action and Resilience Committee met last night. That consists of myself as chair, along with councilmembers Piedmont Smith, Rallo, and Smith. We met with ESD staff, in particular Lauren, and Lauren Clemens and Alex Carley. First, to go a little deeper into some questions and conversation around these updates, and then also to start planning a comprehensive approach to phasing out and accelerating the transition toward, phasing out of gas and accelerating the transition towards electric off-road equipment, both city operations and community scale. So we decided to have one more planning meeting in late November for that purpose before convening some public hearings with both folks from, from the city, possibly other units of government in the area as well, and local stakeholders, certainly residents, but also lawn care companies, possibly hardware stores, others, to try to really gather information about their interest in transitioning, what the barriers are, what could help them move things along more quickly, also to educate around the health challenges associated with gas-powered equipment, which two-stroke engines in particular are really bad air polluters locally, so it's a health hazard for outdoor workers, it's a health hazard for others who are nearby, not to mention a noise-pollution issue. So it's, I think, a good, it'll be a good first exercise for the committee in really trying to tackle a broad set of policies needed to tackle a complicated problem. It'll almost certainly consist of some combination of incentives, programs, disincentives, regulations, and some commitments from the city operations side as well. So that's in progress, and I think those were the main things we, we worked on last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we are going to the public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to make a comment that is not on our agenda this evening. You'll have plenty of opportunities to comment when those matters are brought up, but I will ask if we have anyone at home on Zoom who might want to make a public comment. I do see one approaching the podium here in chambers.
Do you have any folks watching on Zoom? If you'd like to make a public comment now, please use the raise hand feature to let us know you'd like to speak. You can find that raise hand button in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, and if you can't locate that raise hand feature, send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment. At the moment, I see one, one raised hand on Zoom.
Okay, and we will go ahead with our chamber member of the public. Welcome.
My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm president of Bloomington Development Corporation, or a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County in advancing economic development. We define economic development as fostering conditions for prosperity in the community. And what I'm here to provide tonight is an update on the Economic Vitality Project, which we've reported on in recent months to all of you and to members of the public. So this is an initiative that's been going on to address really five key areas of economic development across the community that have been proving to be ongoing challenges or opportunities for our employers and others. Those include land use and infrastructure, workforce, housing, quality of life, business, and employment creation. And I think these are all probably very familiar topics to everyone here, as well as workforce development. And so what we've been doing is, we've been working with the public since June. We've been running focus groups, interviews, we've reviewed about 40 plans that are out there currently, right now, related to economic development, and the goal at the end of this is to create a strategy that members of the community buy into from across all sectors and across jurisdictions to say, how do we try to address these things together and row in the same direction? So a couple of updates for you is, in late September, we held a series of working groups attended by almost 90 members of the public, including members of the council as well, and we thank you for your time. And I've distributed copies of the initial strategies that are a readout from those meetings. If you didn't get one over email, I will follow up with those as well. But broadly speaking, I'll give the, the high-level goals that came out of this as drafts. On land use and infrastructure, it's how do we develop land use and infrastructure to support our housing and business development needs while also balancing these development needs with the community's rural preservation and climate action goals. The second area is on housing. How do we increase the availability of affordable, quality owner and rental housing that meets the needs of various types of people across the community and prospective residents? Third is around business creation and employment. How do we implement a future-forward vision for diversifying our business environment and addressing the needs of large and small firms both? Under workforce, how do we improve talent retention and attraction by increased living in high-wage jobs, as well as increased awareness of career pathways offering economic mobility and greater earnings potential? And then finally, around quality of life, how do we improve quality of life for our existing and prospective community members by enhancing the region's strengths in arts, culture, and recreation while improving health, safety, and social issues across the communities? There's a series of recommendations that have been drafted under each of these sections, which are in the document that you received. In the coming weeks and months, what we'll be doing is detailing, you know, what are the steps behind each of these metrics, who are the partners that would be involved in them? I want to emphasize that we're not going to be duplicating anything that already exists. If something already exists in one of these areas, we want to look at how we can better support them together as a community and then fill in the gaps. So the final thing that I'll leave you with today is a couple of requests. So one, if anybody received this on email, we very much welcome your feedback, because we want everyone to be as much of a voice in this as possible across the community. And then also an invitation to everyone here, as well as members of the public. We have a community survey that's out there at economicvitalityproject.com. It takes less than five minutes, and if you live or you work in Monroe County, we want to hear your opinions on how we can make this a stronger community. So that's at economicvitalityproject.com. It's a less-than-five-minute survey. You could be five years old, 95 years old, working, retired, whatever your situation is, we want to hear from you. And we also have not heard as much from individuals in outerlying areas of the community, so anything that folks would be willing to do to share that survey and get the word out, we appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Do we have the Zoom queued up and ready to go while we're having other people approach the podium?
Yes, first on Zoom is William Coulter.
Welcome, Mr. Coulter, and you will have five minutes. Once you state your name.
My name is Bill Coulter. I live in Elm Heights. I attended Council President Sandberg's constituent meeting on September 17th, where she took quite a bit of heat about the city council redistricting process. People objected to the way the redistricting commission was selected, the way it conducted its meetings and the result of those meetings. With perhaps the faintest hint of despair, Susan asked if the council could at least be given credit for not drawing its own maps, or in other words, not choosing their own voters. No one objected, and those who spoke concurred. Redistricting is not an area of expertise for me, and I indicated that I couldn't have drawn a better map. Natalia Gallion and Regina Moore immediately instructed me at length about how I might go about doing so. Nonetheless, when I attended the committee, the whole meeting on September 28th, I had no intention of making a public comment with regard to redistricting. During Councilmember Volan's presentation regarding the proposed change, I heard him say that he had not moved the precinct where he resides from the new definition of District 4, confirmed at a glance that this was true, and did not give it another thought, but I felt with Natalia and Regina absent that I should make an effort to represent the general sense of redistricting conversation at Susan Sandberg's constituent meeting. Accessibly succinct and normal conversation, apparently I am inscrutably succinct when speaking extemporaneously under the pressure of a timer. I apparently created the impression that I oppose student voting. I do not. I, in fact, support voting by all eligible voters who want to vote, including students, and in some cases, early and often. I apparently created the impression that I believe IU students are children. I do not. I regard graduate students as adults and traditional undergraduate students as adolescents, a unique developmental stage between childhood and adulthood. I apparently created the impression that I think Councilmember Volan was gerrymandering a district to his benefit. I do not. When I objected to a map being sent by the council to the redistricting commission, I was thinking of Susan Sandberg's constituent meeting and her plea for a bit of credit for the council not choosing its own better voters, and the apparently unanimous agreement of participants. I did not and do not believe that Councilmember Volan was gerrymandering a district for his benefit. I nonetheless apologize for having created the impression that I did believe such a thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next in chambers? Welcome.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I first want to commend this body for its deliberation on sometimes grueling budget process. While the lit increase created a flush of revenue, it did not make the hearings any easier on the council. The chamber appreciates making transit, infrastructure, and public safety a real priority in this community. We must never lose sight of local government's purpose to simply provide the essential, essentials to its citizens: paved roads, garbage pickup, well-kept parks, and safe streets. Much like all of you, the budget cannot serve all of our priorities exactly, but through the democratic process, we manage. The second area I wanted to bring up today is beautification. I walk around the streets downtown and can't help thinking that we, as a community, could do better. This may appear to be a trivial issue, however, I am reminded of the work of Lady Bird Johnson. In the midst of her husband's war on poverty, she made beautification her priority, her passion project. Many visitors, whether they're here for the Lotus Festival, a football game, or a college tour, their first impression is, in our fair city, is the Kirkwood Square area. What do they see? They see planters that look drab and uninviting. What we planted, while maybe native to our land, aesthetically does not meet the eye test. Often, I see visibly broken bottles and cigarette butts in these planters. The alloys we claim as an asset suffer from poor lighting and too many visible above-ground wires to be welcoming. It's easy for us residents to become a little bit numb to some of these eyesores, but that is not how our visitors see it. Please take a look for yourself next time you're strolling the central corridor of our beloved city. This brings me to my final point tonight. This brings me to my final point tonight, which is the creed funds, which were brought up during the lit debate, as it means, I believe, to fund public safety capital projects within that district. Now, my records show that downtown Creed Fund 922 has just over $10.5 million in it. These funds were collected from businesses within that district with the intent to invest this money back into the area for community revitalization enhancements, or what is a creed. We do not want to see these funds simply revert to the general fund with no real purpose used for the next pet project. This obliterates the initial legislation intent and is a disservice to the business in this community that paid into this fund. We need to invest these monies back into the downtown district. Maybe beautification is the answer. I thank you for your time tonight, and please, everyone, vote.
Thank you, Mr. M. G. Anyone else from our Zoom?
No, I don't see.
All right. Very good, and I see no one else in chambers. So we are now ready to move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Yes, Councilmember Pete Manzman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on behalf of Interview Committee C, I move appointment of Kirsten Hawley to Seat C2 on the Historic Preservation Commission, appointment of Lara Christoon for appointment to Seat C4, and Raquel Anderson to be appointed to Seat C5 on the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs. And finally, appointment of two advisory seats to the Parking Commission, or, I'm sorry, alternate seats to the Parking Commission, Regina Moore for Seat C2A, and Michael Schnell for Seat C3A.
Second.
All right, those recommendations have been moved and seconded. All in favor of those appointments, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And those are adopted. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any appointments to boards and commissions this evening? And seeing none, we will now move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2204 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Appropriation Ordinance 2204 to specifically appropriate from the general fund expenditures not otherwise appropriated to fund an emergency reproductive healthcare program to help address the impacts of Indiana's near-total abortion ban. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates $100,000 from the general fund to provide the necessary resources for an emergency reproductive healthcare grant program administered in 2022 by the Community and Family Resources Department to address the negative impacts of SB1 experienced by residents. There's no committee recommendation.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2204 be adopted.
Second.
All right, with us this evening, Ms. Kate, please proceed.
Good evening, members of the council and members of the community here and on Zoom. So tonight, what I would like to do briefly is just review the legal landscape that brought us to this request from the council, or for the council. And Director Callender Anderson is here with me, and after I've reviewed the legal developments that have brought us to this point, she will describe the fund that we are asking the council to fund through appropriation ordinance 2204. So as I think you all know, on June 24th, 2022, the U.S. Supreme Court issued its decision in Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health Organization. Sorry, my voice has been going out all day. It's going to continue to do that. That decision reversed nearly 50 years of Supreme Court jurisprudence, recognizing a fundamental federal constitutional right to decide whether to carry a pregnancy to term. Before Dobbs, states could not, as a matter of federal constitutional law, ban abortion or impose an undue burden on access to abortion pre-viability, that is, before the fetus is able to live outside the womb, which is generally pegged at about 22 weeks post-fertilization age of the fetus. After the Dobbs decision, as you are also very aware, the Indiana General Assembly met in the summer to review and to revise Indiana's abortion laws. And on August 5th, the General Assembly passed and the governor signed into law Senate Bill 1, which imposes a near-total ban on abortions performed in the state. So basically, SB1 bans all abortions performed in the state from the moment of fertilization, except for the following things. Abortions that occur in the first 10 weeks of post-fertilization age of the fetus, when the pregnancy resulted from rape or incest. When reasonable medical judgment indicates that abortion is needed to prevent death or a serious risk of substantial and irreversible physical, but not psychological or emotional or economic, harm to the patient. Or when reasonable medical judgment indicates that there's a fetal anomaly that is reasonably certain to result in the child's death within three months of live birth. So there are some abortions that are still lawful in the state, but those exceptions are very narrow. And what SB1 also did was to make access to even those abortions much more difficult by requiring that all abortions that may still lawfully be performed in the state be performed in either a hospital or in a hospital-owned ambulatory surgical center, outpatient surgical center, rather than in the clinics that for decades have been providing the vast majority of abortions safely and effectively in the state. As you may know, abortion services in hospitals and ASCs, those ambulatory surgical centers, are severely restricted geographically here in Indiana, and they are substantially more expensive than clinics and clinic-based abortion care. So what that means is that access to even the few abortions that people still can get lawfully in the state under SB1 are nearly impossible as a practical matter, especially for residents with low incomes. Studies show that the risk of death associated with childbirth is substantially higher than that associated with abortion, and as you may also be aware, Indiana's infant and maternal mortality rates are among the worst in the nation. SB1 imposes criminal penalties and the threat of loss of license on medical professionals who are shown to, by the lowest standard of evidence that may be used, a preponderance of evidence, known to have performed an abortion in violation of SB1. So what that effectively means is that physicians in the state may credibly fear that they'll be prosecuted and/or have their licenses revoked for exercising their professional medical judgment if government officials disagree with their assessment of a patient's condition, or otherwise wish to harass healthcare professionals in order to chill them from providing lawful abortion care to patients. All in all, the restrictions that SB1 imposes on access to abortion will undermine the physical, psychological, emotional, and economic well-being of residents experiencing pregnancy or capable of becoming pregnant, as well as their children and families, undermine the exercise of independent medical judgment by reproductive healthcare professionals, and discourage them from practicing in the state, which will also reduce access to care, and may increase the populations, likely to increase the population of children in the state's already strained foster care and adoption systems. There have been a number of statements made by government officials and members of the community in strong condemnation of both the Dobbs decision and SB1. And those include, among other things, a local public official statement that was signed by all members of this council, thank you for your leadership on this, as well as Mayor Hamilton, as well as the county commissioners, members of the county council, various township trustees and officials, Clerk Bolden as well. And on July 1 of 2022, that statement reflected condemnation of the, basically stripping away of bodily integrity and self-determination that will occur if states ban abortion. And of course, shortly after that, that is what SB1 does, with the very few exceptions that I mentioned before. In addition to that local public official statement, in August, the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission issued a resolution 22-2, Protection of Reproductive Rights and Freedom, condemning the loss of access to abortion services and to the individual liberty that that reflects, and calling on the city to support access to service and to help to fund access to services. And then finally, on August 17th, 2022, the council passed Resolution 22-15, and the mayor signed it a few days later, expressing support for the protection of reproductive rights. So in that resolution, the council noted its support for the protection of reproductive rights and concerns about the Dobbs decision, Indiana's recent passage of SB1, and the expected negative impacts of these actions. And among those observations in the resolution, the resolution indicated that denying Hoosiers capable of pregnancy, including our fellow city and county residents, the right to bodily integrity and self-determination, will impose tremendous physical, psychological, and economic harms, and that those harms will be visited disproportionately on people of color, on economically disadvantaged people, and all others who face discrimination in the healthcare system. And the resolution states in Section 2 that the council hereby establishes as the legislative policy of the city, the support of legislative efforts consistent with the principles set forth above that I was just referring to. And that's really what appropriation ordinance 22-04 is about. It is seeking to obtain some funding to help ameliorate the impacts that people will feel as a result of SB1. As you know, from the recent budget hearings, there was an additional $100,000 appropriation in the budget for 2023 for the same fund that we are talking about tonight. This is a fund that Director Callender Anderson will describe more fully in a minute. But that will be an open competitive grant program for community organizations to come forward and seek funding to assist residents who are experiencing negative impacts as a result of SB1. Now, I should say that there is litigation afoot challenging SB1. There have been three lawsuits filed to date that I'm aware of that are challenging the validity of SB1 under a combination of state statutory and constitutional claims and some federal constitutional claims as well. Currently, there is a stay on the operation of SB1. It went into effect about a week after the law took effect. So the law was in effect for a week, and then a trial judge in one of these cases issued an injunction staying the operation of that law, pending further litigation over the merits of the claims against it. There was a hearing as well last week on Friday in another one of the cases that has been filed, seeking an injunction as well, but it's already in place. In the first case that I mentioned, the Indiana Supreme Court has now agreed to review that case. It has set a hearing for January 12th, and it has left in place the injunction. What that means is that SB1 is not in operation at the moment, okay, for now. And then the Supreme Court will hear the challenges to the law. The trial court judge had found, as you see a reference to in my memo with appropriation ordinance 22-04, that there was a reasonable likelihood that SB1 does in fact violate state constitutional provisions. The Indiana Supreme Court will determine that in January or thereafter. It's unclear how long it will take for the court to rule, but in the meantime, the litigation uncertainty and the needs that attend the restriction of access to abortion will still prompt for us a desire to make funding available to address those concerns, to address the needs that have arisen. And that's really what we're here asking for your help with tonight in the form of appropriation ordinance 22-04. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Callender Anderson to tell you a little bit more about the fund, and then after that, happy to help answer questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Beverly Callender Anderson, Director of the Community and Family Resources Department. Not a lot more to say than what has already been stated. The fund will be managed out, if this is appropriated, will be managed out of the Community and Family Resources Department. We've put together an application for this and developed a five-member panel of community members to evaluate each of the applications. If this goes through tonight, we will have our grant application deadline will be November 7th, and looking to turn them around by November 18th. So it'll be a pretty quick process. The dates of the grant could be over a year. It wouldn't be on the calendar year, so they wouldn't have to spend it this year, but those dates would be, could be December 1st to December of next year or whatever, so it could overlap. But one of the things that we do say in the grant, I mean, the funding requirements for the grants is that the funds are used only for services identified in the memorandum of understanding that we'll present. Grant funds cannot be used contrary to valid local, state, or federal law. Agencies will provide biannual reports, so one, it's the six-month period, and then one at the end of the grant term. And the failure to comply with any of these could, you know, prompt us to call back the grant. So it's a lot like other grants that we have done out of our department, not a very complicated process, which would help with the quick turnaround. The members of the evaluation panel that we've put together are Debbie Herbeneck, who's with the director of the IU Center for Sexual Health Promotion, Brooklyn Payne, who's a student at Indiana University, Councilmember Scimbleary, Dora Sims, who's a former, a former president of the Board of Directors of Planned Parenthood of Indiana, and Jaquila Smith, who is also a student at Indiana University. So those five women have all agreed to be a part of that panel to evaluate all of the applications, any applications that we get in. So I don't know if you have any other questions about the application process or the grant itself?
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Callender Anderson. Questions from council regarding this. Councilmembers Scimbleary.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both for your presentations. I'm not sure who to direct this to, but could you comment on the courses of action that are open to the city of Bloomington if an organization that receives a grant does not follow the memorandum of understanding that we have in place?
She said, "That sounds legal," so I'm going to take a crack at it. So, I mean, a grant agreement is a contract, and like any other contract, if you violate the terms of the contract, then we have the remedies available to us for breach of contract, and that would seek repayment of the monies and, you know, any other things that we might otherwise do in connection with violation of grant terms like that. I don't know how often that's actually happened in the city's past, but we would certainly treat it in the way that we would any other breach of an applicable contract term. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Sure.
And for Ms. Callender Anderson, I believe, could you comment further, talk more for the record, especially about the application process and the questions that have gone into, the thinking that has gone into the application that you developed?
So the applicant, like I said, the application itself is a simple application. We do ask, you know, besides just demographic information, I mean, for the agency, what services they are going to be, the agency will be offering with the funding that they are requested, how many clients they plan to serve with that, with the funding. We ask to discuss, for them to discuss how they determine the amount of funding that they will need. And so, yeah, however they determine that, the cost of whatever they are asking for, and how the program will be evaluated and what outcomes are expected. And then we ask them for a budget, a simple budget. And then we ask them for a budget, a simple budget, so that we can see how they're going to be utilizing the funds.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Let's see. I have a question with respect to the stay or this injunction. You say that we're not even going to have a hearing about this, about SB1, until January 12th, and so the money will be allocated for this year, as well as we've included the same amount in the budget for 2023. Will there be some mechanism for that amount of money that's allocated for this year to roll over, as it were, or also be available if, for instance, we're not seeing a great amount of agencies applying for this by the November 7th deadline?
I believe yes, Councilmember Sandberg. I believe that's the case, that, you know, basically with the stay in place, if people in the community, if organizations feel that they don't need the funding right now, they may not apply for it. If they apply for it, and, you know, there is a need reflected in that application, they will serve it. But if there is money left over, then we would seek, I think, to roll it into the fund for 2023. And then if SB1 never comes into effect and it gets struck down by the highest court in the state, then, you know, we will deal with that as it comes and figure out what happens with the money at that point. But, you know, I think that that outcome, whatever outcome we're going to have, is going to be some time coming.
Okay, very good. And just to make it clear, because I'm looking at the application, you know, it's very, very clearly stated that grant funds may not be used contrary to valid local, state, or federal law. So clearly, in addition to other criteria that you may place around what these dollars may or may not be used for, this is clearly an important.
Yes.
Mandate.
Yes, you're absolutely right. And as Director Callender Anderson said before, these funds will be used in compliance with valid state, federal, and local law. So thank you, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any additional questions from council? And seeing none, we will go now to the public comment for this matter. And just as a note, the public comment opportunity on this item will constitute the required public hearing on the additional appropriation request. So individuals who would like to speak on this matter, please line up behind the podium. And then if we could give the announcement to anyone who might be making a comment from our Zoom.
Yes, I will remind folks watching on Zoom that if you'd like to speak, you can use the raise hand feature under your control bar by clicking on the Reactions tab or the More tab. And if you're not able to locate that raise hand button, please send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you very much, and we will begin in chambers. Please state your name.
My name is Scott Tibbs, and I have been a resident of Bloomington for almost 30 years, and I'm here to speak against spending $100,000 to fund reproductive healthcare or abortion. The excuse in the past for the Hopkins Grants was that we, the Hopkins Grants were not funding abortion, when you could give money to Planned Parenthood. But this year, the mask is off. You are directly financing the murder of babies in their mother's wombs and forcing everyone under your authority to participate in this regardless of our ethical, moral, or religious beliefs. This is a terribly wicked abuse of your authority. Scripture teaches us in Romans 13 that all authority flows from God, and therefore you are directly responsible to Him for how you use your authority. Scripture further teaches us in the Book of Jeremiah that sacrifice of infants is so wicked that it never even entered the mind of God. That's abortion. So please do not do this. Please be pro-choice and do not force people to participate in abortion through our tax dollars. This is a very liberal community, and there's plenty of money to raise these funds privately without forcing taxpayers to fund abortions. Some local employers will already be funding abortion access in two other states, including Indiana University, unfortunately. Approving this funding makes this city council the aggressor in the culture war, aggressors against your own constituents. Hopefully, the state legislature will act to prohibit this in January, and with a Republican supermajority, they have no excuse not to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from Zoom?
Yes, at the moment, we've got two hands, excuse me, three Zoom speakers. First up is Carol Canfield.
Thank you, Ms. Canfield. Is she able to unmute?
I believe she's unmuted. I'm not sure why she's not coming through.
Again, Ms. Canfield, you are welcome to address us if you are able to. And if we can just maybe put a pause and see if our next speaker has more success in becoming unmuted, and we'll come back to Ms. Canfield.
Yes, next up on Zoom is Jessica Marchbank.
Welcome, Ms. Marchbank.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for this opportunity and for your support of reproductive justice and of bodily autonomy. I work with All Options. I have been representing All Options with both the Hoosier Diaper Program and the Hoosier Abortion Fund for five years now. Until this year, I was primarily involved with the diaper program, which has seen a 120% increase in demand over the past three months. In September, we distributed over 33,000 diapers to local families, a record-shattering number, and we expect that number to go up. So we are most definitely feeling the effects of the current economic climate. And of course, with the Hoosier Abortion Fund, as we support people accessing abortion care throughout Indiana and for Hoosiers to go to other states, we have grave concerns about what will happen if SB1 comes back into effect. We also have concerns with how difficult it already is for Hoosiers to access abortion care. Even with the ban enjoined and with abortion legally accessible in Indiana, it is still very expensive. And abortion here in Bloomington will cost someone about $900 and two separate visits. Now, you tell me, people who can't afford to put diapers on the babies they already have, can they afford $900 for an abortion? And at least 70% of the people coming to us for abortion funding are already parents, and 60% of those are parents of children already in diapers. So what we are seeing is a crisis of both reproductive access need and access care and of diaper need. And we will certainly be in support of this, this resolution, and will be applying for funds. But we urge, we urge people to think about not only the immediate need of helping support people accessing abortion care, but what will happen six months from now or a year from now, and whether abortion is legal or not, how the families are going to be supported that are already struggling so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marchbank. Again, can we see if we can get Ms. Canfield back online?
I believe Ms. Canfield is sending in some written comments. She may be having audio difficulties, so if we'd like to go to our next speakers, we do have one more on Zoom if we'd like to move on.
Sure.
Next on Zoom is Renee Miller.
Ms. Miller, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to staff and Beverly Callender Anderson. Thank you to all who met with me and fellow CAPS Commissioner Shelby Ford, including, also including the mayor, Mayor Catherine Carmichael, and the majority of each of you council members. We met regarding emergency funds having to do with reproductive health and bodily autonomy in light of the passage of SB1. We sought advice and support to get to this point. We wrote the Resolution 22-2 that passed our commission unanimously, asking for these funds to be made available because we knew the need would be greater now and ongoing, and we're seeing that as Ms. Marchbank just spoke about. Thank you all for the consideration, and I urge you to pass, vote to pass Ordinance 22-4 so funds can be distributed quickly. As we have seen, an increase in need already at this time, time is of the essence. And thank you to Ms. Marchbank for all you do in our community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And here in chambers, we have a commenter. If you will state your name, please.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Jason Chen. I'm the pastor of Chinese Reform Church of Bloomington. And tonight, I want to start by reminding you of your duty to represent the underrepresented ethnic minorities, people with disabilities, the poor, and those who have not been born yet. The life of every man, woman, and child is from God, and it is a sacred gift. You and I do not have the right to decide who gets to live and who does not, no matter how inconvenient or even how painful that person's existence may be. Even if you're not sure when life begins, that's even more of a reason to defend the unborn. Because you're not sure, you should not be able to, with a good conscience, snuff out what might be a life. I understand the pressure to dismiss what I'm saying is great. A lot of people will be angry at you if you make any move to oppose this appropriating of funds for abortion. But those people's judgment, those people's disapproval, even if it's your fellow council members, won't matter on Judgment Day because God is the one who will hold you and I accountable. Jesus says, "Let the little children come to Me." And He also says that it would be better for a millstone to be tied around the neck of anybody who causes any of His little ones to stumble, let alone kill them. So I appeal to your consciences today to turn away from the murder of innocent blood, innocent children. Thanks.
Any additional comments?
Yes, just the written comments from Ms. Canfield. If you'd like me to read those, she apologized for the technical difficulties. Ms. Canfield's comments are, "Abortion kills a separate individual. We do not fund any other means of murder. Why are we doing so with unborn children? We need to quit playing God with the ones He has created in the womb in His own image. It would be a better use of these funds to help the Pregnancy Resource Centers to help women in crisis pregnancies." Those are the comments.
All right, very good. Anyone else from either Zoom or here in chambers? All right, seeing no public comment, we are back to council for any questions or any final comments. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
In the wake of Senate Bill 1, local staff working for All Options, as we've heard, for Planned Parenthood and other healthcare organizations are overwhelmed by requests for guidance from people who are pregnant and scared. They need more funds to be able to offer women and others who can become pregnant in our community counseling on the full range of options available to them. People are scared that they may be forced to carry to term a pregnancy and become a parent or become a parent to an additional child when they are physically, psychologically, financially, or otherwise unprepared to do so. The decision as to whether to carry a pregnancy to term should be between the pregnant person and their healthcare provider. It is not the business of government, and making it the business of government is a clear violation of the separation of church and state, which is an essential founding value of our democracy. I want to thank the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, and in particular, Renee Miller and Shelby Ford for their advocacy. I want to thank Mayor Hamilton and city staff for bringing forward this appropriation ordinance, and the Community and Family Resources Department and its volunteer panel for facilitating the grant program. I'd now like to read a quote from a guest column in Bloom magazine by Dr. Alice Wood, "All pregnancies carry significant risks to the mother. Prioritizing the growing life inside of a woman over the physical and mental health of the pregnant woman herself is not pro-life or pro-family. Such a policy is instead one of forced birth and an infringement on the very autonomy and well-being of pregnant Hoosiers, thus interfering with their right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." I will be voting in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Councilmember Scambalieri.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments and reminders of the foundational notions of bodily autonomy and reproductive rights and the fact that they are justice issues. Reverend Carlton Vasey, who is the president of the Religious Coalition for Reproductive Choice, offered the following observation. "The right to choose has changed and expanded over the years since Roe v. Wade. We now speak of reproductive justice, and that includes comprehensive sex education, family planning and contraception, adequate medical care, a safe environment, the ability to continue a pregnancy, and the resources that make that choice possible." That's the framework with which I approach this thinking. Certainly, abortion is a polarizing issue, and people feel very strongly about it. But the context in which I'm thinking about this work is that of reproductive healthcare and reproductive justice on a broad level. And so with that, I'll be supporting this ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bolan.
I've been doing a little back-of-the-envelope calculation tonight based on just a few Google searches. There were 78,616 live births in the state of Indiana last year. 531 children died at birth. That makes Indiana, that gives Indiana an infant mortality rate of 6.75 deaths per thousand live births. Where does that fit in the range of all the states? The worst state for infant mortality is Mississippi with 8.12. The best is California with 3.92. So Indiana falls somewhere in the middle, but closer to Mississippi than California. If you, if we were to have a state that took as much care as a state with the lowest infant mortality rate, we could save the lives of more than 200 children a year. The abortion rate in Indiana, there were 8,400, 8,414, I think is the number, of terminated pregnancies last year in Indiana. Only 1.25% of them, about 105, terminated pregnancies happened after 13 weeks. If we were to have a more caring state government that invested in the things necessary to reduce the infant mortality rate to the lowest that we know is possible in America, we could eliminate twice as many deaths from just infant mortality as are terminated after 13 weeks in this state. The people who terminate pregnancies at that end, I mean, there's a sharp drop-off after 13 weeks, they're not doing it because they're, they don't feel like having babies. They're doing it because there's something seriously wrong. And it has never been in my conscience, there's never, I've never believed there should be, I should have any ability to decide on behalf of the person who is pregnant what that person should be allowed to do with their own body. I certainly don't refer to someone else's idea of the law that seems to be very arbitrary because it's based in a book that was written a very long time ago. We work every day, every week, making laws that are, you know, as a democracy, we make them together. And I wholeheartedly believe that the overturning of that settled law was a mistake, and that our continued unwillingness to invest in all the aspects of childhood, of our continued unwillingness to invest in all the aspects of childhood of, I mean, to speak only of the so-called children who aren't born yet, who are not in fact separate, that to me was always the definition of, of birth is when they were breathing on their own outside the body. Granted, we know that children can, can survive after only, what is it, 22, 24 weeks? So I just, this is the first time that we have had to invest so much in it, and like, I just, I can't imagine why we wouldn't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a final comment? Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Take off my glasses so I can see my own notes. This will be brief and to the point. And I've heard some comments. I just want to make it clear that we on this panel do not decide on personal choices of those regarding abortive services. Don't mix the two appropriations. Again, briefly, what I do believe is a woman's unrestricted right to choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I would just conclude, if there are no further council comments, by saying that as someone who has come of age at a time before Roe v. Wade became law that protected a woman's right to choose, there were abortions. They were illegal abortions. They were dangerous abortions. There were abortions with, with consequences, and we saw that, and we know that abortions will happen, whether they are safe, legal, and rare or not. And so what we are attempting to do here as a public entity that has a responsibility toward the health of our residents, particularly those who are coming from low-income situations, this is why we have the Jack Hopkins Fund. This is why we allocate 15% of our CDBG money to social services, is to help those who do not have the kinds of funds to be able to get the abortions that are available to them in legal, safe manners. And so we feel this is an emergency measure that is required now, that law that many of us took for granted and thought was going to be an established safeguard for women, women's rights to their own futures, women's rights to decide if and when they want to become a parent. These things are now under assault by our government, and for those of us that have chanted, "Not the church, not the state, it is women who must decide our fate," this is a blow. This is a body blow, and many of us are grieving the loss of the precious freedoms that had been fought for for so long and we felt were established law. Now that's all in jeopardy, and depending on how the courts rule, we feel that it is time to plan for these emergencies, particularly for low-income women in our community. And let's be clear, a lot of the funding is going to go for prevention of unwanted or accidental pregnancies through birth control, through counseling, through a variety of emergency contraceptive measures that will help women not have to deal with the travails that are ahead of them now that abortion is no longer going to be safe, legal, and rare. So this is the least we can do in the city of Bloomington with respect to our responsibility to the health of women and those who are capable of becoming pregnant in our community. And I will just say on a personal note, and I didn't know if I wanted to bring this up or not, but I'm going to. My only daughter recently moved to Oklahoma to be with her partner. And of course, the state of Oklahoma was one of the more restrictive states, in addition now to the state of Indiana, with respect to repealing these protections for women and women's rights. She is of an age where she could still get pregnant, and she does not want to be pregnant. She has decided from a fairly early age that she did not want to become a mother. That's perfectly fine with me. I'm not going to be a grandmother, but that is her choice. That is not mine. So she and her partner have decided to take some fairly drastic measures in order not to have an accidental pregnant. Birth control can fail, and pregnancies can occur, and given the fate of the restrictive, regressive laws in Oklahoma, she has, two weeks ago, she got a tubal ligation, and her partner's going to get a vasectomy. And that is the fear that we're now living with, that women are now living with, that their partners are now living with, if they do not choose to become a parent, which is their right as a human being, not the church, not the state. But individuals have a right to decide if they wish to bring a child into this world or not. And so when these kinds of matters come home to you in a personal way, this is serious business. And I, you know, people can try to bring in all kinds of means to call us evil and to call us wicked, but I, I do not accept that. This is not what we're doing here. This, this is a public responsibility to assist people who are going to be in real harm's way here in the state of Indiana and here in our own community. So with that, if there are no further comments, I will ask the clerk if you will please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 22-04.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And that passes 9-0-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Kate and Ms. Beverly Callender Anderson. We are now ready to move on.
Madam President.
I move that Resolution 22-18 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. And will the clerk please read?
Resolution 22-18, a resolution proposing an ordinance modifying local income tax allocations in Monroe County and casting 56.66 votes in favor of the ordinance regarding adjusting the allocations between the public safety answering point and general public safety purposes tax rates without changing other allocations or the total expenditure tax rate. The synopsis is as follows. Resolution 22-18 proposes an ordinance to the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council that would modify the allocation of tax revenues between two components of the local income tax expenditure rate. This reallocation will affect the public safety answering point and general public safety allocations authorized under Indiana Code 63.668 without changing other components of the expenditure rate or the expenditure rate overall. With adoption of the ordinance, the allocation for the PSAP would decrease to 0.0631%, representing 25.259% of the total, and the allocation for public safety would increase to 0.1869%, representing 74.74% of the total. The reallocation follows the recommendation of the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee of the County Local Income Tax Council, and would go into effect on January 1, 2023. You do not have a committee recommendation. Thank you.
Madam President.
I move that Resolution 22-18 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and I do believe our counsel attorney, Stephen Lucas, will be presenting this.
Yes, thank you. Stephen Lucas, counsel administrator and attorney. This resolution brings forward a recommendation made by the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee earlier this year in August. This resolution is an annual action that the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council, technically, has taken each year since 2016 to adjust the allocation amounts divided up between the public safety answering point or the dispatch center and general public safety purposes. I'm going to go ahead and share a table that hopefully illustrates the adjustments to the allocations we're making here. This table reflects all of the local income taxes and the different components. The two rows highlighted in yellow are what this resolution proposes to adjust. Each year, the dispatch center requests a certain amount for its budget out of the public safety local income tax. These rates are adjusted each year to fund that portion of their budget. This year, excuse me, for their 2023 budget, the dispatch center requested $2,585,000. And so this allocation adjustment makes that happen. The percentage, you'll remember, the total public safety local income tax rate is 0.25%. That is divided between the amount set aside for the dispatch center, which currently in 2022 is 0.0807%, and then the amount remaining flows to the four units of government represented on the tax council. That's the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, the town of Ellisville, and the town of Steinsville. And that general public safety amount is currently set at 0.1693%. This resolution proposes to decrease the percentage, the allocation for the dispatch center to 0.0631%, again, so that they wind up with their $2,585,000 budget out of the PS Lit, and this would also lead to a corresponding increase for general public safety purposes. I will also show a more detailed breakdown of distributions out of the PS Lit for the last several years. Each year, the state provides a total revenue estimate of public safety local income tax dollars. This year, the state's estimate is just over $10.2 million. Again, the PSAP portion out of that is $2,585,000, which leads to an estimated $7.6 million left for the four units of government. You'll see here in the 2023 column, highlighted in blue, the amounts estimated to go to the four units of government. I believe the amount estimated for the city is just over $3.9 million. Again, this is something that has happened each year since 2016. The PS Lit Committee met over the summer and recommended this amount. I believe the, the budget you all approved last year reflects this amount, so this is a, an action to make this distribution actually happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, very good. Any questions regarding the PSAP funding? And of course, four of us served on the, the local income PS Lit Committee?
I should perhaps mention the PS Lit Committee is, is made up of representatives of the Monroe County Local Income Tax Council. Four city council members serve on the committee. I believe this year it was Councilmember Sandberg, Scambalory, Piedmont Smith, and Sims. County council members also served. There were two, Jeff McKim and I believe Marty Hawke. Scott Oldham from the Ellisville Town Council serves, as well as Lois Purcell from the Steinsville Town Council. So those folks, again, met earlier this year and made this recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, who was the chair? And could they, I assume it was one of our members, could they give us the briefest report on what the conclusions were of the committee besides the numbers before us?
I believe Jeff McKim served as chair. Well, then he can't. I, I will also report the, one of the other purposes of the PS Lit Committee is to review any applications submitted by qualifying service providers for a distribution of this funding. There was one application received this year, I believe from the Bean Blossom Fire Department. The committee did not recommend funding that application. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Sims.
Mr. Lucas, of course, thank you. If you could, and I'm sorry, I just don't really recall, but part of our discussion, and I'm on the PS Lit Committee, the dispatch office requested a new position, and I think it was at the cost of around $85,000, and it is to help the dispatchers possibly reroute some calls for more efficiency. Can you explain that just briefly, if you can? I think it's a positive attribute to, to this decision.
I'm, I'm struggling to remember the details of that position. I remember that the original-
As I'm recalling, I'm thinking it, rerouting, and particularly, mental health calls or through the social worker position. And that's just something I kind of wanted the public to know.
Yes, I apologize. I'll mention that the dispatch budget request was originally 2.5 million. They, they went back to the dispatch policy board with an additional $85,000, came to the PS Lit Committee, which was supportive of that request, and it was for an additional position, I think, in line with what Councilmember Sims is describing.
Thank you.
All right, any additional council questions before we move to the public? All right, let's go ahead and see if anyone from the public would like to make a comment on Resolution 22-18.
I will go ahead and invite folks on Zoom, if they would like to speak to this item, to please use the raise hand feature, which they can find in their control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, where they can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
And this does not constitute any kind of legally required public hearing, does it?
This was a noticed public hearing tonight, yes, and I will also just remind the council members, I'm not sure if you noticed, we'll need all of your signatures on this resolution, assuming it's passage.
So don't scootle out too quickly.
Please work with the clerk after, after the meeting is over.
If there is no public comment on the matter, let's come back to council for any final comment or to call the question. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yeah, I'd just like to note that part of the reason the, the public safety answering point or dispatch budget could be met with a smaller percentage of PS Lit funds is that there were substantial reserves in the PS Lit fund for both the city and the county. So almost $1.8 million in reserves is being used for next year by dispatch. So that allowed the percentage to be a little bit less than last year.
Very good. Anyone else? And I see that our clerk has just stepped out of the room, so shall we stall for time before we can get her-
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak.
Councilmember Bowlin, you want to stall for time?
I'm just stalling for time while the clerk comes into the room as a courtesy, and I think I've done a pretty good job of stalling for time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We are ready to call the question.
I can continue to talk if the clerk needs a little bit more time to get ready.
Wrap it up. We are ready to call the question on Resolution 22-18. If the clerk will please call the roll. Councilmember Bowlin?
Why, yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, and that passes 9-0-0. We are now ready for legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 22-28 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 22-28, final approval to issue economic development revenue notes, sorry, and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Country View Apartments, 2500 South Rockport Road, Bloomington, Indiana, Country View Housing LP petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Bloomington to issue economic development revenue notes pursuant to Indiana Code Chapters 36.711.9 and 36.712 in an amount not to exceed an aggregate principal amount of $15 million. The city would lend the proceeds from the economic development revenue notes to Country View Housing LP and Indiana Limited Partnership and its affiliated partners or limited liability company for the acquisition, renovation, improvement, and equipping of the affordable housing development known as the Country View Apartments at 2500 Rockport Road in Bloomington. Country View Housing LP and its partners would fully indemnify the city and take full responsibility for payment of the note. The city would not bear liability, ongoing obligation, or costs related to the notes. The city would act only as a conduit, allowing the borrower to access capital at a tax-exempt rate and receive equity for the project in the form of tax credits. The renovations to the Country View Apartments are expected to cost approximately $42,000 per unit, including new kitchen cabinets, countertops, appliances, garbage disposals, kitchen sinks, and faucets, new bathroom cabinets, countertops, sinks, toilets, mirrors, and towel bars, new interior doors, sorry, new blinds, subfloor repair, and mold- mirrors, and towel bars, new interior doors, sorry, new blinds, subfloor repair, and mold remediation, new lights throughout the units, new flooring, asphalt and concrete repairs, trash compactor updates, gutters, downspouts, soffit and fascia repair, sanitary main drain and sump pump work, new exterior doors, freeze boards, and additional units will be converted to fully accessible ADA compliant units.
Thank you. And I'm referring ordinance 22 dash 28 to the Committee of the Whole that will meet on October the 26th.
I move that ordinance-
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to move that the council discharge the Committee of the Whole of its obligation to hear ordinance 2228.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment on that?
I'd like to offer rationale, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
I have three major categories of objections to the way the council uses Committee of the Whole as a part of its standard legislative process, which I've shared with all of you in the past and spoken of some times. Briefly, those three categories are, one, I think in many instances, it tends to create an unnecessary number of meetings, extra meetings, which is a pretty significant burden on folks' time and finances, given the number of people that it takes to support these meetings, from clerk staff to BPD, to council staff, to city staff, council members themselves, often members of the public. The second category of, of concern has to do with the public record and the fact that, especially with more simple matters, most or all substantive discussion happens at Committee of the Whole, where there are no minutes. Often, no discussion at all happens at the regular session then, where there are, in fact, minutes. That's really, I think, the opposite of what it should be. And compounding that challenge is the fact that there is typically no report from Committee of the Whole, at least with standing committees. There was a report summarizing what was happening, what was discussed, what the public had to say, et cetera. The third category of, of concern is about confusion caused by that structure among the public, among city staff, among council staff, even council members. And I've got extensive anecdotal evidence from dozens and dozens of people in all of those categories over the course of my council term that leads me to believe that this is not a good structure for us to use and needs significant reform. In this particular instance, this mechanism that ordinance 2228 is considering is essentially pro forma. As the description of the legislation itself synopsis noted, it is no liability for the city. We function merely as a conduit to assist in the renovation of affordable housing. We have considered this previously in multiple instances, including with Crestmont Apartments, Reverend Butler Apartments, and Walnut Woods. So it is identical in form to things the council has already considered. I think it is highly likely we'll be ready to act on this after hearing it once. I say that also, having already heard it, as the council's representative on the Environmental Development Commission, I'm sorry, Economic Development Commission. And so for all those reasons, and particularly that reason, in this, in the case of this ordinance, I would favor going straight to a second reading. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other council comment? Councilmember Volin?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty has summarized more eloquently than I ever have the logic behind not referring to Committee of the Whole, but I'd like to add one, which is on the normal Committee of the Whole so-called legislative cycle. If, as a result of hearing it at a Committee of the Whole next week, any member wanted to amend a piece of legislation, they would have until the week after, when it might be passed at second reading. And the council has generally been unmotivated to extend discussion to third readings, or perhaps has been motivated to have a compressed schedule where things are decided within two weeks of first reading. So in this case, I agree with, with Mr. Flaherty that both this one and the next ordinance are pretty pro forma in the case of, I mean, I'll be, if he doesn't, I'll be moving to discharge 2231 as well, because I would like to see that presentation that the citizen's going to make on the record. I've visited that area, and I think it's important that the presentation they're going to make for that case be public record. So I'll be moving, I'll be voting to discharge all three in favor of a more extended schedule that's all recorded and in regular session. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, well, I, addressing my colleague, Councilmember Flaherty, I, I, I don't agree, at least I don't agree fully with the objections to the Committee of the Whole. I think the most salient to me is probably the, the need to perhaps rise and report for a Committee of the Whole meeting on the part of the chair. So that would fulfill essentially the same process that we had with the standing committees. I don't find them unduly confusing. I think that that is, can be stated at the beginning of the meeting, so that people are aware of what the nature of the meeting is. But I do, I do believe that this doesn't rise to the merits of two hearings. So I would, I would be supportive of sending it to a regular session for a single hearing.
All right, anyone else? All right, we are ready to bring this to a vote. This is a motion to cancel this particular item from the Committee of the Whole. So if the clerk would please call the roll on ordinance 22 dash 28, not being heard next Wednesday on the 26th. Okay, Councilmember Sims? Scambaluri? Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you over somebody coughing. Sorry, just bad timing. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
All right, so that passes seven yes, two no's. So we will not be hearing ordinance 22 dash 28 next week. Next item.
Yes, Madam President, I move that- Ordinance 2229 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. I will not be referring this to the Committee of the Whole on the 26th. Let's move on to the next item.
Vote on the, on the Adams introduction and hear the synopsis.
All right. So all in favor on the introduction, please say aye.
Aye.
Skip to step there, and so I will now repeat that I will not refer to the Committee of the Whole. However, ordinance 22 dash 23.
Madam President, don't we, doesn't this clerk need to read, to actually do the first reading?
Yes, please read.
Ordinance 2229, an ordinance authorizing and approving a payment in lieu of taxes, agreement with, oh, dear Lord.
Point of order, Madam Chair, did we vote to introduce ordinance 2229? I think, are we, it was all in favor, it was a voice vote, I'm sorry.
I believe I said all in favor, say aye. Did I not? Okay. Okay. Sorry, just give me one second, because I feel like I'm reading the wrong piece of legislation. So are we finished with ordinance 22 dash 29, or is there more to read?
No. Just making sure. Sorry. Ordinance 2229, ordinance authorizing and approving a payment in lieu of taxes, agreement with Country View Housing Limited Partnership for Country View Apartments. The synopsis is as follows. Country View Housing LP, or its existing or to-be-formed affiliate, desires to rehabilitate and renovate Country View Apartments and continue its use as affordable housing within the City of Bloomington. In order to make this development financially feasible, development, developer wishes to enter into an agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes, or pilot agreement. This ordinance authorizes and approves the pilot agreement with the developer.
Madam President, I move that ordinance 2231 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2231, to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, regarding amending Section 15.12.010, stop intersections, to change a stop intersection location to a multi-stop intersection location. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Title 15, Vehicles and Traffic, of the Bloomington Municipal Code and is sponsored by council members Rallo, Sandberg, and Smith. The ordinance changes a stop intersection on Sheridan Drive, which stops for traffic on Maxwell Lane, to a four-way stop intersection at Maxwell Lane and Sheridan Drive.
Thank you. And due to the public nature of this one, I am referring ordinance 22 dash 31 to the Committee of the Whole on October the 26th.
Madam Chair, I move that the council discharge ordinance 2231 from consideration at Committee of the Whole next week.
Moved and seconded. Any comment on that?
I, I would like to say just a little bit more about this particular one. I have met with the, the citizen who is primarily behind it. She invited many councilmembers to go out and see the intersection in question. I think it's a complicated intersection, it's very interesting, and I'm looking forward to her presentation. What I don't want to happen at regular session is that the presentation doesn't get remade because it was made at Committee of the Whole. For me, even though this is not in my district, it, it's a really interesting question of the efficacy of traffic controls, and it might set a precedent. You know, and I, I think that, you know, I'm interested in the greater policy concerns for it. So I'd rather see it go to a third reading, where there's time to think about, if, if it's necessary, than to run it through this two-week cycle. So I'd rather see a second reading, and if we can't make a decision that night, that we go to a third reading and there's time for everyone to deliberate and time to make amendments based on what I think is going to be a complicated discussion. So I would ask that we not send it to Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I just to say that I've spoken to Ms. Hatton, and she's prepared to make a presentation at the Committee of the Whole, as well as the regular session on November In terms of, I, I don't see materially the difference in terms of recommending another hearing on it. It would just sort of probably lengthen the process in terms of our schedule. So it would push us ahead to a, if we went through a third reading, to another meeting later in November. So I, I feel our, it should go to the Committee of the Whole, unless I can be convinced otherwise.
I feel actually the opposite of what Councilmember Rallo just stated, which is that by going straight to second hearing, we, we preserve the flexibility to dispose of the item in one night, if, if that's warranted, if the council is ready to act, yet we can refer to third reading, taking roughly the same amount of time in total meetings as Committee of the Whole second reading sequence would. In either case, it's two meetings. But again, by going straight to second reading, we preserve the flexibility to go either route, thus saving everyone a lot of time if we don't need to go to yet another hearing. Additionally, if second and third hearing are what's used, we probably would not need a presentation again at third reading, because we'd already have the presentation on the record, as it's suggested now. Like Councilmember Volin, I would like to see a full presentation at second reading if we went through Committee of the Whole. So that's additional time, staff time, council member time, members of the public time devoted that really isn't strictly necessary. And just a final point, that I've also been in touch with Ms. Hatton and let her know already that unfortunately I'm unable to attend Committee of the Whole next week, because I'll be out of state and have a conflict. So I won't be attending in any case. But yeah, favor going to second reading for the reasons stated just now, as well as the ones stated earlier. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, there's a, this intersection is, I mean, I can see Councilmember Rallo's concerned about this intersection that he's been advocating for, for months now, because I had eyes on it. There's elevation change, there's an extra wide intersection, there's missing pedestrian crossings. There's any number of ways in which this neighborhood's approach to addressing safety there is different from just down the block and just around the corner of the neighborhood. It goes to issues of differing approaches to managing car traffic. And like I said, I think the policy is going to be important. I also don't want to find myself, after a complicated discussion at Committee of the Whole, unable, if it's appropriate to, because I don't have any preconceptions about what the best way to solve the problem is, unable to effectively put together an amendment that might solve the problem better, because there's pressure from the council to decide already. And so, again, if we were to, I mean, hopefully, we won't need more than that evening to discuss it, and we'll be able to make a decision that night. And if so, it will be doing it in the same amount of time. If it's clearly complicated enough, there'll be two weeks from then to develop the appropriate amendment that would be necessary to best solve the problem. So again, I respectfully would prefer that schedule, because either way, it's more optimal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, so thanks for the, both comments of my colleagues. I, this is complicated. It's a complicated subject. I sponsored, I'm sponsoring this because I feel it's the best remedy for that, for the conflict that exists at that intersection. And yes, we may dispose of it at a, at a single hearing, but perhaps it requires two hearings. And that wouldn't be guaranteed if we sent it to a regular session. The disposition of the council might be to, to approve it that night. It may, I, I'm interested in hearing from the public in terms of their, how they view this. I've heard much support, but it's not entirely comprehensive yet. So I'm, this, to me, is the importance of a Committee of the Whole, because although we give a recommendation, it's not binding. So I think it's trepidatious to, to go to a regular session and then perhaps go to a third reading. I'd, I'd rather maintain a Committee of the Whole, so.
Thank you.
I'll be voting no on the, on the motion.
Anyone else? And I will be voting no as well, just in the interest of scheduling. We can certainly go to third hearings, but that just causes additional matters on the agenda that are already in the queue. And so I think this is a perfect mechanism for, especially with the public interest in this. We heard a lot about it at our constituent meeting on Saturday. The public is wanting to come and present at both sessions in order to make their positions heard, and I think we owe them an obligation to do that. So anything else from anyone? Councilmember Volin?
Well, we generally expect any petitioner to present, to be present whenever they're advocating for something. We have chastised people who have not bothered to show up when they, we expected their, their presence. Secondly, people have a tendency to support quick decisions when they support a given issue on the agenda, and they tend to push for delay when they oppose it. Finally, and in this case, there's, I mean, I can say with, with sincerity that I don't have a preconceived notion about this intersection. I'm intrigued by the idea and eager that it's, that it's fully vetted. Finally, I could point out that while Mr. Rallo says that the chair of a Committee of the Whole could rise and report, that literally has never happened in my career as a council member. No person who's been Committee of the Whole chair has ever risen and reported during a regular session, because we were all present, and why would we need to report? So I, I find it to be, that, that part to be not very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if no further comments, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion on the table, which is to not hear ordinance 22 dash 31 at the Committee of the Whole on the 26th. Councilmember Scambaluri? Sandberg?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Sorry, no.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Volin?
Yes.
And Sims?
No.
All right, and that fails four yes, five no. So ordinance 22 dash 31 will be heard on October the 26th in a Committee of the Whole. All right, so that concludes our first readings this evening. We will now go to additional public comment, if there's anyone. I don't think there's anyone in chambers still, but if there's anyone at home that might want to make a comment on not matters of the, on the agenda this evening.
You can find that raise hand feature in your control bar under the reactions tab or the more tab, or you can send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to comment.
No hands flying up?
I do have one comment that came in through chat from Renee Miller, who says the Committee of the Whole is a waste of both staff time and the public's, and that is the only comment I see right now.
All right, very good. We will move on from public comment then to the discussion of our council schedule coming up.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder that the council has a scheduled work session this Friday at noon to hear about items of legislation coming forward during the next legislative cycle. Those items include three ordinances coming out of the Utilities Department, two related to rate cases, one for the wastewater utility and another for the stormwater utility. A separate ordinance that they are proposing would amend Title 10 to add an appeals process to the construction site and post-construction stormwater control chapter of Title 10. So those are three separate items coming out of the Utilities Department. Also this Friday, staff from engineering may be able to provide an update on ordinance 2215. That ordinance was the right-of-way vacation from peerless properties related to the Johnson Creamery site. The petitioner may be requesting that the council bring that item back in the coming weeks, and staff may be able to provide an update on what's happened with that item since the council last heard that, I believe in July. So with those items on the work session horizon, could I perhaps ask what the interest of members is in attending this Friday?
All right, very good. And who's available Friday at noon to hear these three items? I see hands going up. Sufficient to hold a work session?
I see three hands. It's up to the council, unless there's a motion to cancel, we will go ahead with that work session as scheduled.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'm not going to move to cancel, but I did want to raise some concerns I have related to our use of work sessions as well, since we're sort of on the topic of council procedure. My concerns are several. First is that I, and I believe several other council members generally cannot attend them because of their timing in the middle of the typical work day on a Friday. I just generally can't get away or afford that time. I often have meetings filled, filling my Fridays. So there's this sort of differential ability of council members to engage with that process, so it seems a bit unfair, I suppose, for a differently situated employment status to hold things in the middle of the day like that for all. Second is that, the story I've heard of how the work, the Friday work session developed was that council members had complained, and this predates my time on council by a long shot, council members had complained about feeling, you know, quote-unquote, blindsided by legislation showing up in their packets, which to me, that alone is a little odd, because it shows up in your packet on a Friday, you've got first reading on a Wednesday, as soon as you might hear it after that, as another week later. So you've got 12 days from it showing up in your packet to happen to say anything about it in public, which seems like plenty of time. But moreover, if we really needed to know further in advance than the packet what was coming, we could simply have the council president report on a weekly basis from the scheduling meeting what they anticipate is coming up. You would see probably the subject of the legislation that would probably be adequate to serve the function of advance notice even beyond the legislation showing up in packets. General concerns like with Committee of the Whole about staff time devoted to this, that's not just council staff, but city staff, also some confusion I've heard from multiple city staff members, including high-level folks and department heads over time, and empty mayors for that matter, who don't really understand the purpose or function of the work session either. At times, they've thought that we already have the materials when we don't, so they're speaking to them as if we have them. Also, it's generally been cautioned that we should avoid substantive discussion of legislation at work sessions, but I think frankly, having attended a good many, that temptation is too great for council members to resist. They don't simply acknowledge the forthcoming item and/or like share the data or types of questions they may have. Instead, we start asking questions about it and engaging in this substantive discussion where really probably no one is present from the public except for the gentleman sitting in the back of the room right now, Mr. Askins. And I think, again, that's kind of a disservice to the public. I think we've made an effort this term to rein that in, but I can, I can speak to my experience as a member of the public prior to election. In the winter of, fall of winter of 2018, the first time this council considered bonds related to the parking garages that were built and rebuilt, I didn't, I didn't really know about work sessions. Somehow I found out about this one. I came, it was in the McCloskey Room, along with one other member of the public, I was, who was the chair of the Parking Commission, I was the only member of the public there. It even felt like I shouldn't be there, like it felt like I double-checked that I was allowed. And the, this is when Councilmember Granger was, was council president, and the amount of debate that happened on the ordinance in that meeting was astounding to me in retrospect. It was literally developing the legislation. They were, they were going back and forth on how many bike lockers this should be, the capacity of the solar panels, all this kind of stuff that really shouldn't happen in a work session. And I use that, you know, I don't think we've done that as much recently, but I use it to illustrate the point that without being very careful, that's, that's the slippery slope we kind of head down in those meetings. So really, for all those reasons, I question whether we should continue the practice. I think all of its supposed merits could be pretty easily accomplished in less burdensome and less risky means that would save everybody time and money. So that's all. I just wanted to express those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the work session? Yes, Councilmember Bowlin?
I would concur with my colleague, except that there have been times, not common, but there have been times when the opportunity to ask for certain materials to be presented at regular session or in committee has been beneficial to certain legislation. It's just not common. And so the work session is a relatively new development in the history of the council. It's only been happening in the past five to seven years, and, you know, I would urge us to rethink it. I won't be able to be there that, this Friday anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I too think that we should reconsider the work sessions. Perhaps the same function could be served through email. If the council president would notify what is upcoming, then we could reach out to the appropriate staff members requesting the, the information that we would like them to include in the packet. As to this Friday, I am not sure whether I would be able to make it or not, so I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, very good. Do we have need for a work session this Friday, given this discussion? I have a particular interest in the peerless issue that may be brought back on the table, utilities rate cases. Typically, work sessions are an opportunity for council to clarify to the staff or whoever's going to be presenting what more they could do to, to make the issue more understandable. So I find the work sessions valuable, but I'm one of nine. Councilmember Bowlin?
Madam Chair, because I know you have an interest in the peerless issue, if you could perhaps speak with the person who's presenting the legislation and discuss what kind of items you want to see presented that might save everybody some trouble on Friday. That's one suggestion. Thank you.
All right, who's, who other, Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I just wanted to say that I found this discussion beneficial, because I, I do see some merits to a work session, but the importance for being transparent and not having any substantive discussion or, or decisions, you know, evolving at these meetings is important. So I'm agnostic at this point, but I appreciate my colleagues speaking on, on the topic.
Do we have a motion to cancel the work session on Friday?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, well, the clerk, please call the roll. To cancel the Friday work session. Or I can make this real easy and just go, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Any objection? All right, we're canceled. And with that, if there's no other discussion of our schedule, I will call for adjournment. Yes?
Just a reminder, I have any signatures on the resolution that you passed this evening.
Stick around for signatures, otherwise.
Adjourned.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.